Well, Pete.
It's anything, I guess, isn't it?
Right on schedule. One, two, three. Well, there's six. Pete, have you heard, excuse me, Dave, have you heard from anybody on the board that's not going to be able to join us?
No.
I have not. Gwen is here.
Yes, she is.
They must have a quorum at the H, wasn't that you?
Yes, I let him know about a week ago that I might not, I might not be there, and I think they had a quorum. I checked, I checked with Barb. I don't know if she checked messages today or not. She wasn't in the office, was she? Is everyone working from home?
Uh, no, a couple of people went back today, everyone who had a negative COVID test.
Ah, okay.
For anyone that doesn't know, there was a positive COVID test in the town office, town clerk's office, uh, over the weekend, so the building's been closed until today, and only those people that had a negative COVID test could get back in the building. So I haven't had any access to anything. Nope, nobody's had that. Well, I had James Murray, the health officer, went into work yesterday to turn mine and Kristen's computer on so we could log on to it, you know, remotely. Because we shut it off on Fridays for the weekend. We leave it on during the week, but on the Fridays, we shut it down.
You can start one as soon as you'd like, but you are on air.
Okay.
Hey, no more show in the basement.
One, two, three, four, five, six. Well, let's see. Aaron, Molly, Jen, John. Well, wait another minute.
Yeah, Mark Detor did say, he did let me know, he's unable to make it tonight.
Okay.
That's the only person I heard from.
I was afraid I missed one last week. I had my weeks off.
You have your seven regular members, right, Lang?
No, I don't see Aaron.
Yeah, Aaron's there.
He is?
Yeah.
Oh, well, let me go to the-
Aaron, Pete, John, Jen, Gwen, Molly.
Oh, here I am, waiting to see their pretty faces. John Gruder-
We've been a long time on that.
Yeah.
Okay. Long as everybody's here.
John, I'll try not to slow down the meeting tonight.
Thank you.
This is not, this is not a committee meeting. A master plan committee meeting, you know. All right, as Chair of the Extra Planning Board, I find that due to the state emergency declared by the governor as a result of COVID-19 epidemic, and in accordance with the governor's emergency order number 12, this public body is authorized to meet electronically. On November 6, 2020, public notice of this meeting was posted in the town website and on the bulletin board of the town offices at Front Street. As provided in that public notice, the public may access the meeting online and via phone. Please note that all votes taken during this meeting should be done by roll call vote. And let's start the meeting by taking roll call attendance. When each member states their presence, please do also state whether there is anyone with you in the room or during the meeting, and who that person is, son, daughter, et cetera, spouse, et cetera, which is required under the right to know law. So I'll start off, I'm Lang Plummer, I'm Chair of the Extra Planning Board. And, uh, Aaron, you're next.
Aaron Brown, alone in the room.
Cameron?
Um, I'm in my study, and my wife is about to leave.
Yeah.
Grumpily.
All right. Molly Cowan?
Hi, everybody. Molly Cowan, Slough Board Rep, um, here by myself.
Thank you, Gwen. English?
Gwen English, and I am in the room by myself.
And Jen Martel?
Jen Martel, and I'm alone in the room.
And John Gerder?
John Gerder, alone in the room.
Nancy, our alternates, Nancy Belanger?
You're muted, Nancy.
Well, the bar did not work tonight. Nancy Belanger, alternate, alone in the room.
And Robyn Tyner?
Robyn Tyner, alternate, I'm alone, although if you see someone come up, it's my son who's down in the basement.
Okay. And Pete Steckler?
I'm Pete Steckler, alternate, I am alone.
Thank you. Okay, uh, first of all, excuse me. David sent out a note here regarding Two Hampton Road LLC, Windsor Crossing, planning board case number 21404. At the last meeting, I informed the board that I spoke with applicant and suggested if they are not prepared to present on the case on November 19th, I would recommend they be removed from the agenda and return when they're ready to be heard. I spoke with Christopher Berry, the applicant's engineer, and he requested to be removed from the agenda, and they will resubmit in notice butters when they are ready. That was the first, no, first item case on the agenda, but if you're here for that case, it's not being heard tonight. So I'm going to shift back up to the minutes of November 12. Barb sent those out today. Would you like to table them for now, or are we comfortable approving them? Anybody have any comments? Suggestions?
I personally have not had a chance to review them.
Yeah, I didn't see them until five minutes ago, and I haven't read them either.
Okay. We will- I don't need a vote, I just will table these minutes till, oh, our first meeting in December, whenever that is. It's going to be something like the 4th. Whatever, anyway, so we will table those for now and move on to our cases this evening. The application of People's United Bank for the proposed construction of a drive-through canopy and reconstruction of existing parking lot at One Center Street. Subject property is situated in C1 Central Area Commercial Zoning District. Tax map, car sale number 72-205, number 72 216, and is case number 20-3. So I'd ask Dave if that case is ready to be heard?
Yes, in my opinion, it is complete for review purposes.
Okay, so I'm looking for, no, no. A motion, please, to hear this case.
Also move.
Okay.
A second.
Moved and seconded. All right. Roll call vote. John?
Yes, sir.
Jen?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
And I say yes. Dave, you have some comments to start off the hearing, please?
With the, the, um, People's United case?
Yes. That's the only case we're dealing with tonight, I think.
Yep, okay. Yes, I do, Mr. Chairman, thanks, and forgive me, I'm trying to go all electronic here, I'm a hot copy usually. I got my screens on, and I'm, I'm, so, anyway. The applicant has submitted an application plans for site plan review, construction of a drive-through canopy and reconstruction of the existing parking lot located at One Center Streets, right downtown, kind of tight site, uh, right there on Center Street. The applicant appeared before the Historic District Commission, because it is in the Historic District, on two occasions, and was granted approval at their, uh, December 19th, almost a year ago, uh, meeting. This was kind of set back because of the pandemic. Uh, they did propose, uh, three conditions, uh, that are included, uh, in the packet, but just before, I'll scroll down and read them, that the column capital from the top of the column to the neck molding 12 inches, the same as the width of the column. The base would be half of the length of the column, 6 inches, and hip flat roof with a continuous cornice that does not slope. Those are the conditions of the Historic District Commission. It then went forward to, uh, the, uh, TRS UEI and through staff, and you have plans that are dated March 4, 2020, were enclosed, but due to several comments from staff and UEI on those plans, uh, the applicant requested, you know, um, continuance to later meetings. The applicant has scheduled a couple of times, but requested continuations, but here we are this evening, because they submitted the revised plans dated October 13, 2020. Uh, they were received, the planning office, we've sent them around. Uh, DPW, UEI, everyone is satisfied with the plans. We did have a concern about access there at that site and the, kind of the, you know, narrowness of the existing roadways and so forth, so we made sure to check with the police and fire department, who signed off on the proposal, and they have no issues with being able to access, um, that area in an emergency. The applicant, uh, is requesting six waivers from the board's site plan review and subdivision regulations. They do have a copy of their waiver request letter that's dated January 14, 2019, and revised October 13, 2020, and is included in your packet. And in the event the board does decide to take action on the application, I have suggested conditions of approval. That's all I have for now, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Who is presenting for the bank?
I am, Mr. Chairman, Christopher Berry, with Berry's Surveying and Engineering.
Welcome. The floor is yours, sir.
So, Dave, is it okay if I share my screen, just to-
Absolutely.
... presentation a little bit? All right.
Absolutely.
See if I can manage to do this. I was in, uh, South Berwick one night, and I shut the whole meeting down somehow. All right, so again, for the record, my name is Christopher Berry, and I'm with Berry's Surveying and Engineering, and it's been, I don't know, four or five years, uh, since we've done any substantive work in Exeter, so thanks for having us back.
Oh, welcome.
Uh, Dave gave a pretty good summation. Um, the project's located at One Center Street, uh, which is here on the corner. Uh, there's a road, uh, which will be sort of the topic of some of tonight's conversation, Lads Lane, and here is Water Street, um, Main Street there in, um, in Exeter. We conducted in 2019 an existing conditions plan of the entire site. So currently, the site, uh, contains a 4,000, approximately 4,000 square foot bank footprint. There are some office spaces on the second floor, and there's some cold storage on the second floor as well. The main entrance to the bank is, uh, here at the front, uh, so it fronts on Center Street. And, uh, those of you that aren't familiar, uh, there is a nighttime drop box here on the southern side of the building, and there's a walk-in ATM, uh, here where, uh, I'm guessing, similar to a Bank of America, you need a key card access to get in there, uh, and then utilize the, um, the ATM. Uh, traffic on site currently, there's two curb cuts, and, uh, it's a one-way travel, so one-way herringbone-style, uh, parking, uh, looping through, uh, and then exiting back onto Center Street. Additionally to that, uh, there's a road called Lads Lane, formerly known as Governor's Road or Governor's Lane, and it provides access to, um, the historical, um, museum here, and, uh, a duplex, uh, here in the corner, which also has a frontage on, uh, Center Street and, uh, Williams Court. And, uh, that same road provides access to, uh, an ancillary parking lot that the bank also owns and controls. Uh, obviously, we're in downtown, so we have water sewer available to the site, and, uh, I'll note in my proposed presentation that none of that is proposed to change. Um, the, uh, hatching or stippling on the site, um, is everything that is paved, so, uh, you'll note that in the existing condition, both, uh, both sites are nearly 76% impervious surface. We're quite obviously in the urban core, and there's, uh, quite a bit of on-street parking, um, that gets utilized, uh, pretty heavily in the area, uh, along Central Ave, or, uh, Central Street. The proposal, uh, as Dave noted, is to, um, I'll pan over to the... I guess I can't. So, um, this is frustrating. There we go. So, uh, this is the 10-scale blow-up of the, of the proposal that sort of precipitated a lot of the site changes, so, um, specifically now, which is ironic, uh, because this project was planned prior to, uh, all the happenings in the world, um, the bank is looking to have a drive-through, uh, windows, uh, so a drive-through window and also a drive-through teller station. Um, this isn't an ITM, um, but is a pure, um, drive-up, uh, teller, uh, situation, so, um, the substance of the application is to essentially put a canopy on the side of the building, um, and create a concrete pad, uh, here in the center, and have two drive-through lanes to allow, uh, people to utilize, uh, probably a new proposed ATM against the side of the building, uh, a window portal to an inside teller, and then a tube portal to an inside teller, uh, in the concrete, uh, pad. Um, what the bank has found over the years is that people really don't like getting out of their car to visit an ATM if they can help it, and so it's, uh, it's sort of been a hindrance to them to have their patrons park, get out of their car, and then get out of, out of the vehicle and come into the, um, small office area, uh, or lobby area for the ATM. A lot of people just don't feel comfortable doing that, um, and now more and more we're finding that people are not really parking and going into a bank, uh, they're utilizing, uh, drive-throughs much, much more frequently. So it seems like a fairly innocuous, uh, modification to the site, uh, with the exception of, uh, how that affects the rest of the project. So when you come out and you take away that, uh, one-way circulation, um, it obviously changes the site plan pretty dramatically. So what we propose to do is utilize Lads Lane to, uh, enter the project site at the back, uh, provide some parking, uh, along the side of Lads Lane. Uh, you'd have a one-way entrance through the project site, use 60-degree parking here along the edge. We would be able to provide proper ADA access, uh, to, uh, the building. Uh, we'd be able to minimize and reduce one of the curb cuts onto Central Street, which is a positive aspect. Um, that curb cut is a little larger than average, uh, or larger than your regulations require, but it is a reduction from two down to one. Um, and then this would purely be an exit lane on the Central Street. Um, and it's pretty much in the same location as the exit lane, um, in the existing condition there. The dumpster, currently, there's a dumpster on site, it's sort of slung here in the corner. Uh, that would be upgraded to a dumpster on a pad with a proper, uh, chain link with black slats, um, barrier and screen around it. Um, another great feature about the project site, uh, layout is it actually drops the impervious surface of the project site from 73 or 6% down to about 64%, so, um, over a 10% change in impervious surface. That change alone would, uh, reduce the flow and volume leaving the site, um, but also due to some of the site layout, uh, that we were able to, uh, perform, we actually have a small area of remaining, uh, space that would be green, and what we opted to do is grab, uh, the stormwater from these spaces, the stormwater from Lads Lane, and some of the opposite stormwater on budding lots, and route that through a bioretention cell or a rain garden, and then that would be discharged to the MS4. So not only are we, uh, able to reduce the impervious surface, which has positive effects on stormwater, oxygen, oxygen adjacent, oxygen adjacent, I can't say it, having less oxygen in the water, um, and, uh, purification water through the, uh, bioretention cell, uh, those areas are also proposed to be landscaped, so there'll be, uh, areas of, of new green space, uh, in the downtown area. Um, another, uh, positive note, uh, to the site, uh, plan itself is the opposite, uh, parking area that, uh, is proposed to be resurfaced. Uh, that had some ambiguous paved areas that were, uh, partially on the site, partially off the site, and so those areas are being cleaned up, removed, so any encroachments off-site are now removed, and, uh, there is a slight reduction in impervious surface in that area as well. Uh, as Dave mentioned, uh, this project, because of its uniqueness, being right downtown, uh, there was a lot of, um, comment and question from Department of Public Works and Underwood Engineers. I think we were able to adequately address, uh, all of their comments, uh, and concerns through, moving through the process. Um, as Dave mentioned, we have, uh, six waiver requests, and again, these all have to do with the fact that the project site is located downtown, and we're not really in a suburban area, we're in a much more urbanized core area. And due to that, uh, a lot of the, uh, open features that you see on a lot of those suburban sites, um, are just not available, uh, to this site. Uh, we are pretty familiar with project design of this size and style. Um, we do quite a bit of urban infill, uh, in other municipalities, uh, a little further north from you. Um, and so we're confident in the design, and we're confident in the, uh, the waiver requests that we're asking for. Um, the, uh, as I mentioned, in the existing condition, there are no proposed changes to, uh, utilities on site. None of the, uh, sewer, water, any of those, uh, underground utilities, none of those are proposed to be modified, uh, as part of the project design. Um, a landscape plan was provided, uh, and I believe, uh, Dave has reviewed that for compliance. Um, again, uh, currently, there's none, uh, and so this is a, a pretty, pretty good improvement, I think, to the streetscape along Center Street. Uh, the parking, uh, is being reduced on site, so, uh, we currently have, I believe it's, um, 25 spaces, uh, that's being reduced down to 21, so we have a four-space loss, but we have a 6Q, uh, count in the, uh, drive-through, and so the whole point of this whole project is to reduce the number of patrons that are coming to and through the bank, increase efficiency, uh, while utilizing a drive-through process. And so the bank, uh, and through our, uh, study, uh, using the ITE manual, um, have determined that, uh, we actually have a net increase in some cases, uh, or in this case, of parking, uh, due to the fact that we have a 6Q, or we're allowing for six additional people to move through, to and through the site. Um, I guess the only last thing we would, I would, uh, discuss is one of the waivers has to do with a waiver to, uh, onsite slopes, so your regulations require that a parking lot be no greater than 5%. Um, in this instance, right here. Um, and, uh, this parking array, we're proposing a 6% grade. Um, typically, industry standard has a max grade of around 7%. That's when you, and on a 7% grade, if you're getting out of your car, the door will pull away from you, if you can sort of imagine that. Um, we're not reaching that industry maximum, we've, uh, we've grouped this out at 6%. Um, and, uh, that's only 1% greater than the current, uh, regulations. Um, and I would just point out that the current site, uh, has slopes that are greater than 6%, so though the redesign does not meet your requirements, it exceeds the, uh, existing conditions on site. So I guess with that, I'd be happy to try and answer, uh, any questions that you might have on the application package.
Thank you, Chris. Board member, have, have, any board members have some questions or comments?
Aaron Brown has his hand up.
Okay, Aaron.
Thanks, Lang. Mr. Berry, I was going to ask if you could enlarge the plan on the screen? Um, because I was trying to make it larger on mine, and I can't. I don't know if you can, just, I don't think we need to read all the words, I think looking at the site plan detail where you're talking, uh, and when we get into conversations, really helpful to follow along.
Is that a good size, or would you like it larger?
Uh, that's pretty good for me, but I'm not the oldest guy on the board or gal. Um, sorry, Lang. I guess the other thing I was hoping you could address is, um, the three conditions that Dave mentioned, and that came out of your meetings with the Historic District Commission.
Um, unfortunately, sir, I cannot address those. Uh, I am not an architect, and some of the words Dave was using, I would have to use Google to determine what they were. All I know is that, um, the, uh, somewhere here... Nope, that's your website, you don't need to see that.
Just the first page on the elevations, right? You saw?
Uh, the first page, the first page in the printed packet, but not, there we go. So, uh, this is the elevation of the proposed, um, modification to the bank, um, and quite frankly, this is the extent of what I understand, uh, the architectural to be. The, uh, applicant's contractor, uh, moved that through the HTC process with his architect. Um, so unfortunately, I really can't speak to many details about it.
Okay, that's fine, I appreciate your honesty. Um, and I guess the other thing I, I had picked up on in their conversations was the, and maybe you can address this, is the fact that, uh, there was some concern about, originally, the group was telling, talking about abandoning the walk-up ATM, uh, but it sounds like that's not the case, and that you are going to have both options for your customers?
Uh, yes, I believe that's the case.
Yeah, that's it for me, Lang, for the moment.
Thank you.
Jen Martel has her hand up.
What did you say, Dave?
Jen Martel.
Jen, okay, Jen.
Um, I was wondering if the applicant could speak about the lighting plan?
So the lighting plan is a, that is a demonstration of the existing lamps. We're not proposing any changes. Let's see if I can get- There we go. Uh, we're not proposing any changes to the lighting plan currently. Um, there are ample, uh, lights, well, I, I'm sorry, I misspoke. Um, there is a, a large lamp here, um, it's a Cobra head that sits atop a, a utility pole. So, uh, we modeled that the best we could. Um, most likely, there's more ambient light that comes from that pole than is modeled, and then it's the same, uh, as the situation here out on Lads Lane. Um, the reason, even though we're not really changing the lighting, the reason that we wanted to model this was, uh, we are proposing can lights in the canopy, and we wanted to demonstrate that those were not going to adversely affect the lighting, uh, in the area.
Okay, thank you, that's, I just wanted to clarify that, that the streetlights weren't, were existing.
That's right, that's correct.
Uh, could I ask if the streetlight is sky, night sky friendly? I'm not sure if that's the right word, or?
Um, it is currently labeled as a, what we know as a Cobra head. Um, they're downlit, meaning the bulb is on the bottom side of the Cobra head, but they're probably not compliant in a whole host of other reasons. But again, those are not lights that we own or can control.
Do you know if that happened to get changed, when the town changed all the streetlights, Dave?
That, I don't know.
Okay.
I think that their indication to us was changing all, all the ones that were on the town ledger were going to get changed over. Whether it's completely completed the changeover, I'm not exactly sure.
Okay. Jen, did you have something else? I didn't mean to cut you off.
Um, I actually did have another question, but I think Robin was before me.
Oh, Robin, okay, Robin?
Hi, um, I guess I was just curious about the layout. I mean, I like the whole philosophy of the whole change overall, but just the triangle section there, is that just a factor of turning radius coming in, that you create that triangle between the two parking areas? Or does that have to do with the elevation?
Um, are we talking about this triangle here?
That one, and, but I was really looking at the little skinny one, like, you know, a lot of times, opposing parking spaces just butt up against each other, and, and it doesn't, so I didn't know if that, you know, why?
Um, no, these are, this area is ad grade with this, um...
So if you move your arrow down and to the right?
Down and to the right, here, yep.
Down? Yeah, right there.
There is a, there is a grade change there, so there's an 18-inch, we have, uh, we're proposing an 18-inch curb in this area to make a degree change between this parking array and this parking array.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
That's it.
Gwen English has her hand up.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, when you, when you were explaining the, the traffic pattern, did you, did you say anything about what happens when people exit the bank? Do they, can they go, uh, to left and to the right? Or are you, are you limiting what direction they can take when they leave the drive-through?
No, there's no, there's no restriction on left or right turns, so if you're in exit lane, uh, you're allowed to turn left and right. Um, this exit lane would allow for the same exact movements.
Okay. And I assume that you're going to have some kind of signage for people going into the bank so that they know- bank so that they know to go into Lads Lane?
Yes, currently, there's a sign, it's not shown on the site plan, but there's a sign at the existing entrance with an arrow that says People's Bank. That sign would essentially be modified to show that you would then enter on Lads Lane.
Okay. I, I have some thoughts on parking, but I, I think I'll wait on that for the moment. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Jen or Robin, you both have hands up?
Yeah, I had another question. My question is about the rain garden, and I was wondering what the ground cover in the rain garden is, it doesn't look like it's indicated in the detail. Is that gonna be mulch, or?
No, that rain garden is proposed to be grassed, so grass-lined for maintenance. The UNH Stormwater Center has prescribed that grass is superior to the mulch toppings and the plantings that historically have been used. But we are proposing some ornamental grasses in there so that we can take some advantage of the green space for some additional landscape features.
So it'll be like a mown lawn, except for the areas where you're showing the plants?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Nancy, you have your hand up. Whoops.
Hi, yes, so I'm gonna follow up on something that Gwen just asked. You're going to have three lanes going through there, and they're all gonna come out onto Center Street. There doesn't seem to be that much space between the end of the lanes and Center Street, so what's gonna happen when three lanes, before they get to Center Street, and they can either go left or right?
So the vehicles that would leave the lane adjacent to the building would essentially determine the, basically, the queue location, so, and, and this is a confined site or a confined space, so there will have to be, if there is traffic that is in Center Street, there will have to be some patience with the individuals leaving the bank, because you're right, if there's a car, a single car in queue here, then somebody leaving the, the ITM pull-up isn't gonna be able to pull up and, and leave specifically. That's one of the concerns that Department of Public Works had and Underwood had with, originally, our design actually had an even wider throat, which would give the appearance of multiple turning, exit turning lanes, when in reality, we're not proposing multiple exit turning lanes, we're proposing one lane to exit, so that the individuals leaving the parking spaces here can pull out and leave without having to jockey around and get into a dedicated queue. If you were to close this up to try and create a dedicated exit lane, a more narrow lane, you'd actually have more congestion in that intersection with three, three vehicles trying to jockey for position.
Okay, Mr. Chair, may I follow up?
Yes, please.
So have you considered limiting that to two lanes instead of three? Wouldn't that be less congestion there?
No, because then you would force this, specifically this parking space, or this individual leaving the parking space, to almost have to back out and get into the lane, the exiting lane for the drive-up, so that they could then swing their vehicle around and get into a position here. This would allow, this allows them to sort of pull out, pull ahead, wait for their position, and then go.
Okay, but they're gonna pull into a lane, is, is this lane, is this third lane or the one closest to your parking spots? Is that going to be another one of your, under your canopy?
No.
Oh, okay.
This third lane is open and free for access.
Great, that, that's, that helped, thank you very much.
Was, Chris, any discussion about painting a traffic line down through to help, help clarify that really the exit are two lanes? So that, you know, somebody doesn't come out of the ATM and want to go to the left and cut right across?
Are you talking about some sort of striping in this area?
Yes, yeah, right from, from the end of the drive-through to the curb. I don't know.
Well, what we don't want to do is, if you were to, let's say you were to put a stripe here, and that would, that would sort of dictate that this person needs to pull out and come into this position here. What we don't want to do is create a, a traffic pattern that forces this individual to come out and stay in this lane when really they want to turn left or right, that would be their right. And, and vice versa, if you have somebody trying to leave this lane, and they want to turn in this position, you don't want to put two vehicles in the same traffic pattern that have opposing turn, you know?
Thank you.
Desire for different turning movements.
Yeah.
Aaron Brown has his.
Did you say, did you acknowledge me, Lang?
Go ahead, Aaron. Brown has his hand up, Lang.
Yes, Aaron.
I was just gonna say, I'm actually a customer of People's United Bank, although I use the location, I think it's, I think it's 80 Main Street, near the railroad track, often, several times a week, and their, their drive-through access and egress is very similar to this. They don't have the parking, if you're looking at this screen on the left-hand side like they do here, but they have the three lanes that come in like that, and it really does work. It seems to work fine. They have parking to the right more, if you know, the building. So that, those lanes do seem to work, for whatever reason, people figure it out.
Other questions? Is there any public, Dave, tonight?
There are zero attendees this evening.
Oh, that's boring.
On Gruder has his hand up.
Okay, John.
I just have a, I, I just have a concern with the cars backing out onto Lads Lane, that whatever you put on the corner from the, the rain garden to a sign you talked about, doesn't block the traffic of someone taking a right-hand turn in there, because that first spot's gonna back out. You know, they won't get to Center Street, but they'll get close enough, if someone's coming around the corner and couldn't see well, it could be an issue. That's it, just a comment.
Robin Piner as well?
Robin?
I was just curious about that back parking lot, and I don't know if there's any, I mean, how, how well-used it is now by the bank, I mean, how, how often it's full, I'm just kinda curious if there was any discussion of that, or?
There are, there are, I wanna say, three, four, five cars there parked pretty consistently. I think that's dedicated space for employees, and that would be proposed to remain in the proposed condition.
So that's employee parking?
Yeah, the, the bank likes to keep the lot open and free for their customers, so their employees park in that second lot.
Gwen has her hand up as well?
Gwen?
Yes, I'm, I've not been comfortable with the five lots on Lads Lane since this plan was first presented to us. I know, I know you didn't present it, but when we got it in our packet, and there are a few things that, just a few comments that I'd like to make about that. One is, and I know we're in odd times right now, but I've, I, I go up Center Street fairly often, and I can't remember the last time I drove up and saw that parking lot that is right next to the bank, when I've seen that full. And you made the comment in your presentation that you've noticed that people have been choosing to, to drive, they, they would prefer to do a drive-through and not get out of their cars and go into the bank. Well, I, I know that there will be, be people that have to go into the bank, and they will need to have a place to park. I know people typically park on Center Street, and those, I think there are three lots right on Center Street that I almost don't ever park in because I feel like that's kind of the People's Bank parking area. I think, I, I honor that those, the folks that want to go inside probably choose that spot just because it's easy, but if you've got, if you're calculating six, six people in the, six sort of parking spots in the, in the drive-through lane, plus the six that are in the main parking area, plus the 10 that are in the upper lot, I just question whether you really need to have those five lots on Lads Lane. The other issue that I've, I, I question is that, and it was mentioned in the notes in our, in our packet, that when, when you go to plow, when the town goes to plow that, they're gonna be plowing right into those five lots, and it's, it's up to the bank to, to get rid of that snow, there's no other place to put it. And that just seems like an undue expense on the bank, and I, I just, I wonder if that will actually happen, or if they'll just kind of let those go in the wintertime. And I don't know, I don't know if, if the board would ever consider, as we've done with other projects, maybe, maybe setting those five lots aside as a, for future use if needed, and not put those in now, I don't know if that's even a feasible, that may not be feasible, but it just, I just, I worry about people backing out, I worry about the plowing, I worry about pedestrians going up Lads Lane and finding themselves in the traffic lane and dealing with people maybe backing out, and I, I just don't know that, I just, I just question whether that, those five spaces are really gonna be needed. So that, that's, that's my thought at the moment.
John, is that your hand again, or just?
My, my hand again, yes, sir. I kind of agree with Gwen, although I don't drive by that bank very often, I've never seen the parking lot anywhere near, close to full. Would, does it make sense to, to take those five spots that, that, onto Lads Lane and make two or three parallel spots? Then take the whole parking lot with the six, the six spaces, move it over to the left on the screen, and maybe open up those lanes that, so we're not quite as congested where the three lanes are, or the ones certainly closest to the, where the cars park?
So, if I could.
Go ahead, Chris.
So, though we do have the, the drive-through lanes, which will attenuate more, more of the parking demand, it will also drive more business to the bank. Those five spaces are, those are important to the bank. They feel that their, their business model is going to require that they are going to have a demand for those spaces. We did look at parallel spaces in that area, we really could only pick up two or three, and it really, at, at one, one point, the discussion was whether or not the project was even gonna move forward if they didn't have what they would consider an adequate number of spaces. So though the perception now is that the, the lot is empty, and a lot of times it is, there are other factors that are, that are trying to drive additional business to this location through the use of that, that drive-through. You know, I, I thought a lot about Lads Lane and the backing out, because it was something that Department of Public Works and I talked about, as well as Underwood Engineers. So if you think about the snow plowing, what happens now in the existing condition is they plow through that area, and they basically push snow right onto the bank's, bank's lot and the bank's parking area, and the bank has to take care of it. And so the way we looked at this was, this really doesn't change that aspect of it, the plow's gonna go by, and it's gonna push snow into the area where the bank has to take care of that, and the bank's gonna have to be diligent about piling it in specific areas and having it removed, just as they do now. They do not have room for snow storage now, and they're gonna have the same non-existent area for snow storage in the future. If you think about backing out onto Lads Lane, currently, there's, this really, the, the traffic that's being generated to Lads Lane is the bank's traffic. There's really no additional traffic on Lads Lane, it goes down to the parking lot for the employees. Those employees show up in the morning and they leave in the afternoon, so they're not generating a lot of trips to and from the intersection, and then to the driveway to the existing duplex there. So there really isn't a whole lot of traffic in that area for people to, to be in conflict with. It'd be much the same as somebody backing out into the 16-foot lane of the, of the parking lot itself.
How many, this 10 employee parking spots?
Yes, I believe so.
There ever, are there ever 10 employees there at the same time? You know? Although you did, you said there was some lease space upstairs?
There's, there's office space upstairs for additional loan generation and things of that nature, so there could be, there could be up to 10 employees at any one time in this location. And as demand for business increases, the demand for employees will increase also.
Thank you.
I think it's Jen Markell, and then Gwen, and then John, I think, start with Jen, and then Gwen.
Okay, Jen?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I am also concerned about the, the angles parking back out onto Lads Lane, and I have two concerns, in addition to what we've already heard from other members on the board. One of them is that when Exeter has events, so the, this came up when I was first moving to Exeter, I attended the, it was before I decided to move here, and we heard about the Independence Festival, and my family and I were like, oh, let's go check that out, we can check out downtown Exeter. And we drove down here, there was not a parking spot anywhere to be found, we didn't really know our way around, we ended up on Center Street, and I was like, parking spots? And it happened to be the bank, you know, I pulled into the bank, I didn't realize I was like in a bank, I thought it was a municipal lot, anyway, long story short, I parked, realized, oh, this is the bank parking, I need to leave. So I guess what I'm saying is I could see that happening, visitors coming, not realizing this is bank parking, it kind of looks like municipal parking, they're gonna pull in, they're gonna realize, oh, I can't park here, because I'm assuming there'll be some kind of sign, and then they're gonna back out, and now you've got all this extra traffic, there's nowhere to go, except for through the bank parking lot again. So I am concerned about how this space will be used during busy events, when you've got a lot of cars driving around looking for parking. My second concern is just more kind of engineering-wise, the parking space that is, currently has a number five on it, so the first one next to the rain garden, if you're a passenger getting out of that parking space, there's no place to go except for down the slope into the rain garden, so I feel like that's unsafe, I think you need a little bit of a, that space is gonna need to be wider, or have some kind of landing area for a passenger getting out of the car there, so that they don't get out, step onto a three-to-one slope and trip. And those, those are basically my two comments or concerns. I, I agree with, I like John's idea of maybe going to a parallel parking, or eliminating it altogether, I just feel like that parking is gonna be very problematic.
Well said.
Looks like Gwen and Robin.
Okay, Gwen?
Okay, Gwen.
Um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, following John and and um Jen's comments, uh I I I do like the idea of having a couple of parallel spots there and I'm just wondering, is the upper lot too tight? I I actually Googled. I was trying to find, um shame to say, I was trying to find Lads Lane because it wasn't on my plan set and I knew where Governor's Lane was, but um so I Googled it and and I was looking at the um sort of the view online of the upper parking lot and and whatever picture they'd taken of it, there were there were cars parked um on the upper edge of that lot. They were they were parallel parked, I think. And I didn't know if is it too tight up there to maybe accommodate maybe two parallel spots up there and maybe put the other three down on Lads Lane? Could they be divided up or is it is it would that be too would it be too cramped? Um, and that's one question and I'll just say the other one real quick. I when Jen was talking about the safety of people getting out of their car in that lower lower parking spot. Um, I I'm not sure where they go after they get out. Do they are they walking on Lads Lane? Do they skip across the barrier to go down into the main lot? It's it's it just doesn't seem particularly pedestrian-friendly. Um, so if you could maybe help me out with that, that would be appreciated.
So there really is not space in the upper lot. I know currently the lot doesn't really operate like a normal parking lot. It will need to as more and more people need to park there. Um, you're right. I think people sort of back in and there's some parallel parking that takes place in this area, but if you put a proper uh eight by twenty or even ten by twenty, you're really only leaving a twelve-foot lane through here, which is not enough for people to to back out. So unfortunately, that's not an option uh for us. Um, with respect to the landing platform, uh I agree a hundred percent. We we tried to widen it up a little bit in our grading plan, but um we can we can certainly widen that up some additional space. This rain garden, I mean, it's not needed for stormwater calculations. It's sort of an improvement that we're trying to make on the site, so it can that that platform grading platform can be widened out um and just a little more area just taken out of the bottom there. So that's not a problem. Um, with respect to pedestrians, these five spaces, people would need to get out and leave their cars. Um, the most likely route is to come down to Lads Lane and enter the sidewalk here. Um, it seems unlikely that they would come up and over and then back down again. That that's not a common travel path. So they would need to come down uh Lads Lane and then enter the sidewalk in this location.
Where where does the sidewalk begin there, Chris?
So uh the sidewalk ends uh right here at the right here at the intersection. Um, we widened this radius up um per the request of uh your engineering review. Um, and so the sidewalk sort of ended uh here. That's where it ends now. That's where the existing sidewalk ends.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to do is create a continuous sidewalk, but right now you have little pieces of it uh as you walk along Central.
So is the rest of that just a grassed area?
That's right.
You go in as you go up into Lads Lane?
That's right.
Okay. So that'll probably become a path. So maybe you could just make that a paved walkway. I don't know. Oh, let's see. We got Robin. Uh.
Yeah, I I I mean, I guess I that's kind of what I was going to ask about is how do people walk from those five parking spaces? It really doesn't bother me at all that they back out on Lads Lane because I do go through Center Street fairly often. Um, you know, cutting from between the post office and St. Anthony's and um there's not much traffic down Center Street. Um, I I sometimes fear for my life backing out on Water Street. I worry that's a place that having parking is tough backing out of, but not on Lads Lane. And even if there were five people at once and they changed their mind, it's only five people. But I see walkway does kind of bother me of where to walk and that you asked that you'd have to walk down to join the sidewalk. I kind of wondered the same thing with that whole snow area. Can you make a path? Because I know if I pulled into one of those five spots, I would probably walk up the whatever eighteen-inch grade and walk up into the upper parking lot and cut across um just it's just it's the path of least resistance. It's the shortest way, especially if it's February and it's two degrees outside, you know? Um, so i- if there was a more direct path, pedestrian pathway, I would feel better about that.
I mean, one thing we could do is we've we've widened this radius to be a little more compliant with your uh regulations. Um, I mean, it's it's a narrow neck now. There's really no reason. We're not talking about high speeds, so a high, you know, a a large radius through here is really not necessary. We could reduce that radius down and basically pick up some additional space in here and carry that sidewalk up a little further, so it's a little more inviting to actually come down, grab the sidewalk and jump on. Um, we do have a utility pole here that we have to work around and I'd really rather not narrow this section of Lads Lane. Um, but we could we could grab that sidewalk and bring it up just a little farther so that it actually made some sense for somebody to come down, jump on the sidewalk and then come around.
That's good. Pete Cameron.
Um, am I ahead of somebody? No. Um, I did a little drive-around today just to get a feel for what's there now. And I will echo um Aaron's comment about your other facility up by the railroad track. That has uh three lanes narrowing down into two. And you can uh get out quite easily there. Uh, then one of the differences, the traffic is moving a lot faster there than it will be on on Center Street. But it's it's tight. But it certainly seems to me that that this is a rational approach toward um toward what they want to achieve. Uh, that's about all I have the thoughts I have.
Thank you.
Aaron has his hand up.
Yep, Aaron.
I just had a question from um in terms of the exiting the vehicles in the five spots on Lads and then the spots across from the canopy. Did you ever consider um some kind of walking area between that goes up into that little triangle that you have? And making that a direct walking area down to the parking? Because that way you catch all those cars. Everybody coming out of a car could jump on that. Get on the sidewalk and then use your crosswalk versus walking directly uh willy-nilly across where people are coming in and out with the vehicles.
Hmm. So at one point, we did have um an idea to try and basically have a walk, you know, a walk here. I think is what you're trying to say. The problem that we ran into was it's the shape of this is really not conducive to a walk. Um. And then the other issue is that you have uh an eighteen-inch grade drop from this point here to this point here.
Ah.
And so then you're you've got a walk that's above grade by a you know, a an unsafe distance essentially. So we would need to find a way of then getting a rail through there. Um, and then additionally, you then need to get them to a a location. So you need to get them down to either this location or the walk location. And it just after we kind of looked at all of the different factors, it just didn't seem like it was going to really work that well. Um. And the 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 benefits of the even the small amount of green space in the urban area was something that I think we just decided to place a higher value on. I don't know that we could actually get a walk to work properly in this this area here.
We can always make a stair, but that's all right. I I appreciate what you're talking about. The uh and I I would say from what the board's talking about, extending the existing sidewalk then around that corner would make a lot of sense.
Yeah.
And Martell has her hand up.
Jen?
Thank you. Um, I have two additional comments. Um, and these are uh mostly just related to materials. Um, the first one is about the trash enclosure. Um. You know, given the proximity to the Lad House and you know, the beautiful Lad House and then the you know, attention put into the detailing on the bank building and the Historic District Commission, I feel like I feel like I would like to see something a little more attractive than black chain link fence around the dumpsters. Um, you know, maybe like a um wood or you know, faux wood or something like that, I think would look nicer. Um, or even, you know, something just something other like chain link can can look pretty, it almost looks like temporary to me and um I think in this area, we want something. I think it'll it'll kind of stand out in not a good way. Um. And my second comment was about plant material in the rain garden. Um, you're showing three or there I don't think they're all in the rain garden, but on on the planting plan, there are three um cornus alterniflora or pagoda dogwood. Um, and I would encourage you to consider a different tree. Um, that is um in my experience, um and I'm a landscape architect, so I you know, and I actually have this plant growing in my yard, but is it's not an urban tolerant tree whatsoever. It will not survive existing in a snow storage area in a traffic island in a downtown area. So um I would definitely encourage you to pick a different tree. It's a beautiful tree, but it's just not unfortunately, it's a little finicky.
Yeah, we can we can certainly look at a different um different material type around the uh the enclosure. We uh the design is for a chain link with with black slats, so it's not just chain link. But I do understand what you're saying. We're we're putting a lot of detail into how the side of that building looks with the new canopy and and then we're placing a basically a black enclosure next to it and then next to an area that um has some pretty significant relevance to it. So um yeah, either a wood or a um I don't want to use the word vinyl, but I think your your word was perfect, a faux wood of some kind to sort of match that architecture. Uh, that's not a problem. And then the modification of the plants, we have obviously no issue with.
Thank you.
Gwen, is your hand up again?
It is. Um, just uh first of all, I I like the I like the thought about the um dumpster site. I think that I think that that could be improved on, so I think that was a great idea. The other um the other question I have in the area on in the let's see, on the Center Street side, kind of in that corner of the where the rain garden is being proposed. Um, it doesn't show it on this plan, but on one of the plans I looked at, there is a an outlet structure. And on the landscaping plan, there's kind of a tree planted in the same spot. And I don't know if um I mean, I don't I don't know how big the outlet structure is, but it 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 appeared that that could be a conflict just in putting a couple of things in one spot and I don't know if you want to take a look at that and just see if that is a problem.
We I mean, we didn't uh we didn't think it was an issue when we designed designed your position, but I I mean, your point is well-taken. Oftentimes, what happens on sites like this, and I think Dave can probably attest, is you know, that tree will likely get modified for one reason or another. Um, so it may not be exactly in that position, so it might be a few feet away from it. Um, so we're not we're not married to that position. We can we can certainly adjust it uh if you felt more comfortable.
Okay. Um, and then in one of the in one of the notes, um and I'm looking at the upper lot now. There it may have been at the HDC meeting, but there was a comment about wanting to put more green space around that upper lot. And the only thing I saw in the most recent plan, um there there were like some large they may have been labeled landscaping boulders and kind of on the left-hand side of that um of that area, upper left-hand side. And I do you have any not what I didn't think of that particularly is and I don't mean to be critical, but I don't think of that as being landscaping, but I didn't know if you were maybe planning on putting some um plantings on that upper upper area?
I wasn't at the HTC meeting uh or meetings. Um, I think what they may have been referring to is this that current parking lot extends over the boundary line here.
Yeah.
And we're proposing to saw cut that back uh onto our site. So that may have been the green space that they were referring to. Um. I I don't know that I would feel too comfortable showing plantings in this area. Um, and I haven't reviewed this corner for landscape materials. This area um it might look good on paper to show, you know, some plantings there, but in reality, I think what will happen is it will get plowed into. There's really no there's really no area for snow storage other than this these two areas. And I just I think if landscape materials were placed there, they'd probably be destroyed pretty rapidly. The landscape boulders um were a function of this parking lot is is just off sort of a steeper area here on the back. And so we don't want a hard guardrail through here because that's probably where they'll push their snow. Um, and so what we wanted to do was just excavate out a platform and then place boulders there off the edge of pavement so that snow can still be plowed there, but vehicles wouldn't uh traverse too far down the slope if they got into trouble.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Okay, anybody in the public, Dave?
Bill Zero attendees.
Okay.
But Pete Stekler has his hand.
Okay, Pete. That's from here from you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So um I do want to just say I appreciate the attention to the stormwater management with the um detention basin or radon garden feature. I'm just the separate lot. Um. And given that that's not tied into, from what I can see, sort of a a stormwater drainage system. Um, if there was any consideration, especially for that lot, to have uh like a permeable pavement, um assuming the pavement's going to be replaced um to reduce storm water in the downtown area.
Um, we did uh we actually did discuss that with uh the applicants at or very early on in the planning process and the use of that type of material on the site. Um, based on the hard-edged turning movements and things of that nature onsite, they specifically, you know, weren't going to be able to do that. The issue with having different material types from one lot to another is they have two totally different maintenance programs. So this lot would be uh would be required to be plowed by a different uh plow company, a different uh contractor to do that with a rubber edge. Um, and then they'd have to pay specific attention to um how you know, the long-term maintenance of this. Additionally, that pavement, it's not just a pavement product. That would require the applicant to also excav- excavate down and reset all of the materials below that surface. So um it was something that we considered, um but um we opted to make the the other smaller proof on the on their site.
So which direction does the water flow?
Uh, it flows off the uh back, so it actually flows in the opposite direction.
Is that the way it goes now?
Yes, yeah, that we're not proposing any great changes to that lot. Only uh what we call a mill and fill, so they're going to mill the material out and repave.
Yes, okay.
There will be a reduction in flow in those areas and a and a reduction in nutrient load load, just due to the small amount of reduction in pavement due to the saw cutting.
Okay. Jen, you got your hand up again?
I do, Mr. Chair. Thank you. As I was looking at this, all these details are coming out. So in that parking lot, so you've got your 10 spots, and then there's like kind of a half a spot, and I'm wondering if there's an opportunity there, you know, just to kind of be consistent with adding a little bit of green and depaving, if that last kind of half a spot, that's not really a spot, could be depaved and turned into a plant bed, and maybe even have a tree put in there or something, and just something to narrow down that curb cut, make the whole lade lane a little more pedestrian friendly, and organize the parking a little bit.
Yep. Oh, I agree with that 100%. That's a, that's a good idea. I'm actually embarrassed I missed that. Yes.
Thank you.
Jen's a regular detective here. Now, Gwen, have you got another question? Let me see if you get your hand up. Nope. Again, no public, so are we ready to move ahead? Okay, let me close the public session at this time then, so the board can get to some deliberations and talk about the waiver requests. And Chris, we would like to have you kind of go through those requests. I know there's a lot of waivers, but
We have tradition.
The court likes.
Yeah, and we have statutory requirement, is what you meant.
Yep.
So I will generalize the waiver request, and I'll explain the waiver request. I think we put a lot of detail in the actual request itself, so I'll let, I'll let that stand from a statutory standpoint. But I do want to at least bring all of the waiver requests to your attention. So the first waiver request. Hang on just one second, because I'm concerned that our waiver requests are not in the same order as they are on the plan.
Oh, they're not.
Okay, so I'll read them off from the actual document.
Okay.
So the first waiver request is that the width behind the row of parking here on site be reduced from 20 feet. So this aisle width would ordinarily be 20 feet, and we're proposing 16 feet. The obvious reason for that is our site is constrained, but also 20 feet is excessive. No offense to your regulations. The standard aisle width in a 60-degree parking space is 16 to 18 feet. We're proposing 16. We've proposed 16 in other bank locations. We've also proposed 16 in an urban project in a city to the north of you, and it is very adequate for even moderate and larger-sized vehicles. So we would request that the board waive that requirement. The hardship to the applicant is if that waiver is not granted, essentially this project does not move forward, and the bank is not able to really do anything with their site. Let's see.
Let's, let's deal with them one at a time.
Oh, okay, that's great.
Because we have the quantity, and we may get our widths and what angles and dangles mixed up. So any questions of the engineer? Dave, do you have any conditions of approval for these at all?
For not, no, of the waivers.
Okay. Well, if we're satisfied with that explanation, I entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Jen.
I can make a motion.
Okay.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of People's Bank, PB case number 20-3 for a waiver from section 9.13.6 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations to reduce the minimum aisle width within the parking area be approved.
Is there a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, Pete. Any discussion? All right. We'll do our room calls. And let me start. John Gruder?
I'm still thinking.
Okay. Jen Martel?
Yes.
Gwen English?
Yes.
Molly Cowan?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
John Gruder?
I've been outvoted. Yes.
And I vote yes. That motion carries. Okay.
Thank you for that. So the second waiver request in writing is the proposed curb cut radius. The regulations require that radiuses are larger than proposed, so 25 feet. So that would mean that each one of these radiuses here, internal and external, would be 25 feet. If we were to utilize that radius, that would essentially gobble up all of the sidewalk and really create a curb cut, or multiple curb cuts that are much larger than needed. And so we would propose that the waiver be down to 10 feet at the exit lane, and as shown throughout the site. And if the board would just understand that if you're inclined to move ahead with an approval, we've discussed shortening this radius to allow for the acceptance of an extension of the sidewalk through here also. The hardship to the applicant is if you were to require that type of radii, it would really impede the walkability of your own town downtown, and increase the size of the necks of the entrance to a point where it may cause confusion to drivers moving out of the, the exit lanes. It will appear as though you have more lanes and more movements there than you really have in actuality.
Thank you. Any questions? Then Chris included in his testimony to modify that particular corner we've discussed before, and continue the walkway around to about the telephone pole. I think that's a pretty much what she said. I'm not trying to take words out of your mouth, but I believe that's what you included in there.
Yes, sir.
So I'd entertain a motion?
Can I make a motion? I think we're on item three, correct?
Uh, yes.
Did I miss one?
Well, you're, you're fine, but I think, I think you jumped to the 10 foot, the radii, which is number three in your application and in our town plan and prepared memo.
Yes, yeah.
But I'm fine to make the motion. So I'm going to make the motion. Just want people to all be on the same page here. So this is number three. Roadway access points waiver motion. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of People's United Bank, Planning Board Case Number 20-3 for a waiver from proposed curb cut radii of 10 feet for private driveway and alterations as discussed during the meeting be approved.
I'll second that, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Did you, did you skip a line there, Aaron? Third line?
I might have, I didn't mean to.
Yeah, waiver of section 9.14.9.
You missed the, of the site plan review and subdivision regulations?
Oh, man.
Because you worked in his
But you meant to include that.
I did mean to include. I'll just go quick again. All right. After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of People's United Bank, Planning Board Case Number 20-3 for a waiver from section 9.14.9 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations to permit a proposed curb cut radii of 10 feet for private driveway and changes as discussed at the meeting in that area be approved.
Good. Is there a second?
I will still second that.
Okay.
Good job, Aaron.
All right. Any other questions? And I'll call for the vote. Aaron, how about you?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Molly?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Jen?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Waiver approved. All right. Back to you, Chris.
You're the one on the back out on public streets, right? That would be the going back into order for number two.
Well, I can do whichever one you like. That's not how we have them ordered, but that really doesn't make much difference.
Okay, I was just going by your October 13th memo. Okay, whatever you want.
Maybe I missed one. Did I miss one? Yeah, I did. My mistake.
Okay.
Yeah, it's the bottom of page two, like October 13th memo.
Yeah, my mistake. It's still all glued together here for me. So the regulations require that parking not back into public streets. Obviously, we have a situation where five spaces back into a public street known as lade lane. And I think we've demonstrated that lade lane is a very low-volume area. Basically, the traffic generated to and from the site will utilize lade lane only, as if it were a one-way parking lot in a lot of ways. And as previously pointed out in the meeting, you have situations downtown quite prolifically that used in lade lane. The detriment to the applicant would be the loss of those five spaces for such a small loss of the ability to back out onto lade lane. The loss of those spaces may push the applicant to not move ahead with the project in totality, based on the increase in business that is likely to take place once the improvements to the site are made.
Any questions? And I'm willing to hear a motion? Anybody?
You can do that.
Okay, go ahead, Pete.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move that the request of People's United Bank, Planning Board Case 20-3 for a waiver from section 9.13.5 of the site plan review and subdivision regulations to allow proposed parking to back out into a, or onto a public street be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, any discussion? And then I'll call the vote.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I just have one, I have one point of discussion.
Yes.
Or one, one more comment to make in addition to what I've already made about this. I think one of the other reasons that I'm uncomfortable with this is the fact that you're introducing, by introducing this parking on the street, you're introducing kind of a, a wide curb cut where there is no curb cut today. And that, that whole area back there, lade lane, and the museum area, you know, it is a very pedestrian area, even though there aren't sidewalks. And my feeling is that with this parking, you're going to feel like you're walking through a parking lot. And that, I think, is really going to damage the character of that area, rather than improve it. I, I do like the other improvements that are being made and the introduction of green space, but to me, this, this is not an appropriate place to park.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chair, I just have a question on this.
Yes, Gwen?
People, people are parking the noses down on their car. They're, they're going to be I don't know if in the winter, if it's, if it's slippery. I have a hard time picturing what that grade is going to be like, but I just wonder if people are going to be, tend to put their foot on the gas pedal a little bit more than usual, just to get out of that spot and onto lade lane. I don't, I don't know if it's that much of a grade that that would be a problem, but when I looked at the lot a few months ago, I just thought, wow, that's quite a drop. And is that going to be, is that going to make people a little bit more careless? I don't know if that's the right way to put it when they're getting out of those parking spots. I don't know. It's, it's just a thought I had, and it may not have any merit, but it's, it's different in a way than backing out onto Water Street from a, a, a spot like this, because it's all level. I don't know.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion that's second on the floor, and we're going to call for the vote. We'll start with John Gruder.
No.
Jen Martel?
No.
Molly Cowan?
No.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Gwen English?
I'll say no.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
And a vote yes. I believe it's a four-three vote. So that request fails. Am I correct on that, Dave?
That is my math as well. And that's, I don't know how you go forward with the plan until, because that basically says you can't use those five parking spots. So this plan needs to be, you know, redesigned at this point.
So would it be best then to table to date certain?
I mean, I, I guess, you know, let's hear from the engineer, but I mean, then the only, you know, yeah, condition that it would be like eliminate those five spots, and it would just be, you know, grassed, if that's what the planning board wanted. But that, if, if you can't back out, you can't have those. So all those five spots away, and something has to be done with that area. So if the board is comfortable with saying, okay, I, you know, proposing something, but I'd, I'd want to hear from the engineer on his thoughts and his reaction to that first.
Okay. That's reasonable.
So, I mean, my, my first reaction was, let's pack up and go home, because there's no point to continue. But I think Dave has a good point in that if the board would allow maybe one, two, or three parallel spaces there, and then add the balance to the green space, it might be a good, I guess, happy medium for the applicant and the board. And if the applicant I guess happy medium for the applicant and the board. And if the applicant who isn't present tonight, by the way, if they're not happy with that, then we'd have to come back to the board at some point in the future. But if the board were inclined to move ahead with two, you know, two or maybe three, I'm not sure how many spaces we can get in there parallel, then you'd remove the backing out potential on the Lads Lane. You'd increase the potentially the green space in the middle. And without the backing out, you increase the walkability of the area. So I guess I'd like to hear what the board would be inclined to do there.
So something along the lines of not to exceed three parallel parking spaces?
Yeah, I don't think we could get more.
Get that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. I brought up the parallel spots, but I didn't understand. You said something about creating three parallel spots, but then adding something else in the green space? I'm not sure what you meant.
Well, so the parallel would be, would obviously run like this.
Right.
And I think I think you could get two. I don't know that we would get three. But if they're not as deep tight, they're 10 feet. They'd be about 10 feet and not 19 feet. So the balance of that would go to green space in the center here. And I might try and shift them over a little bit so that you have a little wide and paved area here. So that it wasn't just 10 feet right against the existing paved line. You know, we we push them over a foot, two foot or two and then add the balance to the green space in the center.
It's much more appealing to me. I like that.
Would it also make sense to widen that aisle a little bit?
Widen.
The one we gave you the waiver from 20 to 16?
If there's space in there, you know, we can certainly take a look at that.
It might make it easier for your customers.
Any other thoughts on that concept?
You would still need to pass a waiver for the parallel spots.
Yes.
You still gotta yeah, I guess you gotta back or pull out.
How would you reword that?
Maybe you don't. You back in, but you pull out because it says you can't back onto a public street. You're kind of backing in and pulling out. I don't know. If the board feels a waivers, you know, not, you can go ahead either way.
You can do it like I do and just do the front end dive. And if you can't make it, you don't park there.
Well, you all have the automatic parking cars now, you see, so that's
Well, they all gotta go in the same direction when they're parked? Or can one go one way and the other go another way?
Yeah, I think you could, you could you could, I would recommend you you go through the waiver again. Like you, you know, if you wanted to grant it, you grant the waiver with the condition that the five angle parking stalls on the southeast side of map 72 shall be removed and replaced with two to three parallel stalls and add the balance of paved area to the adjacent green space.
Okay. Somebody willing to make that motion?
Mr. Chair, if I may, just make a quick comment.
Sure.
Um, I personally am feeling I would feel a lot more comfortable tabling this and seeing the plan redrawn with these parallel spots. And with the other changes that we've requested and that the applicants, you know, agreed to tonight kind of all on the plan because we've talked about also wrapping that sidewalk around, but then what happens to the sidewalk when you've got the parallel spots? You know, they have to see kind of how all that works. Then you've got, now you've got more green space. Is that gonna be planted? What are the plants gonna be? I think it's a significant enough change that I wouldn't feel comfortable personally voting on it without seeing it as
Yeah, Jen, very good point. So Pete Cameron?
If we're gonna well, it seems to me that the other three waivers should be addressed now because if the board is gonna have a problem with them, the applicant ought to know that. So I think it would be my recommendation that we look at the other three waivers. And if we're gonna deny any of them, then then the applicant will have to address those. And I think it's unfair that we don't give him all of his problems tonight.
I agree with you, Peter.
Yeah. Number five, number five might be difficult because that made their grade may change now, potentially.
He gets a waiver. We just have to give him parameters then, right, John?
I guess, I guess, yeah. I'm just seeing if we can do it. I may agree with four then. Yeah, I think you're right. We could probably do the rest.
Okay, let's do the other, what, four, five, and six? I think we have consensus on what's gonna happen with two, but I agree with Jen. We have talked about a lot of little changes here and there. And rather than having a bunch of conditions, we could have the plan modified to meet those comments in that discussion.
That's for you, but certainly we've been at this a year, so.
Another week or two is okay.
Well, another week or two really isn't, you know, I'm not gonna push too hard for tonight, so.
Okay, go on with the next one then. Chris?
So the next one I have, unless I scroll by one, is a 24-foot wide commercial drive and we're proposing a 30. Is that what everybody else has? Okay. So here in this case, we had, in the existing condition, we had two curb cuts that were well over 40 feet in width. We're reducing that down to one curb cut. That's now 30 feet. Most commercial drives that operate in this capacity, if they had a longer queue length at the intersection, you could choke down to 24. In this case, we don't. And so we're proposing a 30. And this is directly related to the radiuses that we were talking about earlier. And the further you narrow this up, the more crammed you feel at the entrance. And the more sort of jockeying you would need to get the vehicles into queue and then exit the lane. And so we felt that this reduction, I think originally we had it at 35 down to 30, I think is a good compromise between operation of the site and the regulations which state 24.
Okay, any questions? I'm willing to hear a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Thank you, John.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of People's United Bank Planning Board Case Number 20-3 for a waiver from Section 9.14.9 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to permit a proposed curb cut of 30 feet for commercial exit be approved.
Is there a second?
I will second that.
Thank you, Gwen. Any questions or discussion? Let me call the vote. Aaron?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Molly Cowan?
Yes.
Ben English?
Yes.
Jen Martel?
Yes.
John Gruder?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Approved.
Thank you for that.
Thanks, Chris.
Next one is the the percentage of slope, five to six. Is that what everybody has? All right, great. So the max grade in a parking lot, as I mentioned earlier, is typically 7%. That's where you feel, that's where you start to feel uncomfortable as a passenger. Your regulations state five and we're proposing six. Most of the grades in the existing lot are six and a half or seven. So we are only proposing a 6% grade in this corner here. And originally, we were proposing a 6% grade here. But now that would be removed because if we are proposing parallel spaces, we could pick that elevation up and grade it into the green space a little better. And so you wouldn't have 6% in this area. The only 6% area you would have is here and then the drive aisle. And then there's really, the hardship to the applicant is if you decline or deny the waiver, essentially you're stating to the applicant that there's no further redevelopment of the site that could take place. Because you have a fixed elevation at one point and a fixed elevation at another point. And there's only so many ways you can make up those elevational changes on site through the use of small curb walls or grading.
Thank you. Any questions? Comments? I'm willing to hear a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Gwen.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of People's United Bank Planning Board Case Number 20-3 for a waiver from Section 9.13.7.4 of the Site Plan Review and Subdivision Regulations to permit a maximum grade of 6% be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Any questions or comments? Then I'll call for the question. I mean, for the vote. Jen?
Yes.
Molly?
Yeah.
Aaron?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That's approved.
Thank you for that.
Yes, okay. Number six, Chris.
Number six. So the last one, parking space is required to be nine by 19 instead of the industry standard of nine by 18. I'm guessing you hear this one frequently. The industry standard is typically nine by 18. Nine by 19 would of course push one additional foot in every direction, which we really just simply do not have. The existing spaces on site in the upper parking lot are nine by like 17 and a half, so there's an improvement there. And then I think it's important to note that the angle spaces are not nine by 18. In the parked position, they are nine by 18 in the, I'm sorry, not in the actual drawn position, but in the actual parked position. So each one of these lines, as you can see in the parking detail, is much longer than 18 feet. Because if you can imagine the front bumper, front wheel touching this front area and then coming over perpendicular, you sort of have some wasted space at the front of an angled space. So I just didn't want the board to think that it was nine by 18 and then it was being shorted because of the angle of the parking. So the hardship of the applicant is the veering from the industry standard of nine by 18 would reduce the ability for the applicant to move ahead of a constructive project because the additional space is taken up by a wasted parking area.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, then I'd be willing to hear a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Thank you, Gwen.
After reviewing the criteria for granting waivers, I move at the request of People's United Bank Planning Board Case Number 20-3 for a waiver from Section 5.6.3 of the zoning ordinance to a reduction in size of parking spaces be approved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, John. Okay, any questions? Then I'll call for the vote. John?
Yes.
Gwen?
Yes.
Pete?
Yes.
Aaron?
Yes.
Molly? Cowan?
Yes.
Thank you. Jen Martel?
Yes.
And I vote yes. That passes. Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to briefly go over my notes real quick with the board to ensure that I got all of the comments that I should be addressing in the upcoming days and weeks.
Please do.
All right, so one of the members discussed better enclosure detail of the dumpster. The same member discussed modifying this paved area for additional green space and fence embed. We talked about wrapping, modifying this radius and wrapping this sidewalk up as far as possible to improve the walkability of the area. There was a tree that one of the members wanted me to look at near the outlet structure.
To go to Dogwood.
And to modify the tree's style. That's right. And then originally, there was a comment about a platform here. That comment would sort of carry through when we look at one or two parallel parking spaces, ensuring that there's a platform on this side of those spaces for the patrons to get out and be able to safely navigate around the vehicle. And that is what I had for notes. Did I miss anything?
Dave, did you have anything that he missed?
Uh, no, you know, there was some site distance comments, but I think those go away if you go to parallel.
Right.
Any board members have something that we missed, which I can't believe, but?
I think there was some, when the parallel spots are put in to have, maybe have some idea of what type of landscaping might go into that additional green space?
Yes, we would update.
Okay. You're all set, Chris?
Yes, sir. If you wouldn't mind continuing to a date certain so that we wouldn't have to re-notify and then I can get the packages to you.
Okay, Dave, what would that date certain be?
Well, to that end, I was just looking at that. Well, it depends on the board because December 3rd is the next meeting. This seems small enough, you would even be ready for that, Mr. Berry.
Is that a statement or a question?
It's a question.
Yeah, I could.
Okay. Well, so, no, if, go ahead.
We could button this up. These are heavy lifts for us, so.
Okay, so that, knowing that the board, you, on that agenda that night, you have a 6,400 square foot addition to the extra hospital. And you also have Chinburg Development coming in for an amendment of a previously approved subdivision known as Bramble Meadow, that five lot. They ended up wanting to change the drainage pattern on one of the lots. So there's those two applications. Would you feel comfortable of adding this? Or the following would be December 17th?
Which is fairly open?
Well, no, not really. We already tabled an item, it escapes me, last meeting to that.
Okay.
And I want to get through the impact fee updates, so I kinda, but, but the impact fee updates we're doing, so, you know, we could put this on the December 17th agenda if you felt that was a better place.
David, I can tell you that was the New Hampshire Industrial Properties LLC.
Yes, correct. Thank you.
Well, I think the third is a workable plan.
Okay. Then you can table it till December 3rd at 7:00 PM.
Who would like to make that motion?
I'm a little gun shy, but I'll make it.
Okay, go for it, Pete.
We're gonna, is we tabling this until then?
Yes, tabling this case.
Okay, well, I would move that we table the application of People's United Bank Planning Board Case 20-13.
Three.
A third, 20-3, excuse me. Until the meeting, Planning Board meeting scheduled for December 3rd at 7:00 PM. Almost at 7:00 AM.
I noticed that.
Second.
We need, oh, thank you. We need, oh, thank you. Moved and seconded. Quick, um, roll call vote, uh, John Gruder?
Yes.
Jen Martel?
Yes.
Gwen English?
Yes.
Molly Cowan?
Yes.
Pete Cameron?
Yes.
Aaron Brown?
Yes.
And I vote yes. So we'll see you in a couple of weeks, and have a nice Thanksgiving.
Thank you for everybody's attention side, I really appreciate it.
Chris, thank you for a very thorough presentation.
Thank you. Get out of here without crashing your own meeting.
Uh, let's see now.
If you just hit the leave button, there you go.
Yeah, right.
Did we adjourn?
No, 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 Chris just left.
Chris did, yeah. Uh, Dave, while you're on the screen, any, uh, planners' items?
You know, I haven't been in the office all week, so. We do have, uh, solar RFP was done, was due today, so I'm excited to get in the office and see who bid on it. Uh, we did have a, a transportation alternatives, uh, bid meeting the other day, a few contractors have pulled the, uh, pulled the bids for the sidewalk project, so that's slated to start, uh, this spring. So those are two good pieces of news this week.
Good. Good.
Okay. I'd, uh, accept a motion to adjourn, and everybody have a nice Thanksgiving.
Yes, happy Thanksgiving, thank you.
Where's Aaron?
Motion to adjourn, happy Thanksgiving.
And have a nice Thanksgiving, that's the second part of the motion.
Happy Thanksgiving, everybody.
Again, thank you, people, so much for your dedicated service to the community and working with the developers.
Hey, stay safe.
Yeah, stay safe.
Stay home.